No earthquake yet, but the plan has already paid off. A house has burned down, but the people in it are alive and well, partly due to neighborhood readiness. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The city also has a new jumpstart program, a shorter version of the five-step plan. For information on neighborhood readiness, visit fivesteps.la. Well, from a neighborhood plan to a college plan, and a big relief if you're an incoming freshman, LA is offering two free semesters of community college starting in September. Experts sat with the mayor to discuss expanding this program even further. Gil Reyes explains.
The only high school student member of the LA School Board says she's proud of LA's newly enacted college promise.
Because it is groundbreaking, and it is something that the entire country will be following one day.
But first, how about tuition-free community college for at least one year throughout California? A possibility probed at this panel discussion at Getty House.
Where students can expect that upon graduation that they were actually go-to as a normal course of circumstance, one of our colleges.
LA's promise offers free one-year tuition at LA community colleges for graduating LA Unified Students starting next year. It's patterned after Long Beach's promise system. Long Beach Superintendent Eloy Oakley, who is also the incoming chancellor of California Community Colleges, promises to take up this fight in Sacramento.
We're going to do everything we can to create an environment in California that allows districts in LA to do what's right for their community.
LA Mayor Eric Garcetti moderated the discussion and talked about the costs.
It's $250 million to make this throughout California. $250 million may sound like a lot, and the state budget it is not. So, we're looking forward to helping support those initiatives as you take on in December your new role.
The scale we're talking about is massive. I mean, it has not been done at the scale we're looking at. And it takes really dedicated leadership. It takes partnership.
Between school districts, colleges, and generous corporations. At the Getty House, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
LA's college promise alone costs $3 million for the first year and required donations from the Broad, the Karsh Family Foundations, as well as the LA Dodgers. Well, one year of free college tuition is certainly a good thing, but add a free computer, that's just the icing on the cake, as the city's innovative computer giveaway arrived in the West Valley, and it certainly didn't disappoint. Gil Reyes reports on the latest OurCycle LA rollout.
The lines formed early, as families in and around Reseda became the latest to receive free refurbished computers, thanks to the city and its partners.
Everyone's going to get a full desktop computer that comes with a monitor, a tower, the mouse, all the cables, a keyboard. They're also going to get a Wi-Fi adapter, since these are refurbished computers, they're going to get a Wi-Fi device so they get Wi-Fi as well.
That's four free years of internet access, Windows 7 and Microsoft Office included. The families can thank the OurCycle LA program. OurCycle takes thousands of outdated city department computers and refurbishes them for people in need.
And we didn't want to just do what most cities do, which is they send their computers to the scrap heap or to be recycled. We wanted to actually take the equipment that the city had been using, that the taxpayers paid for, and find a way to make something positive happen in the community with those computers.
Councilman Bob Blumenfield represents this section of the San Fernando Valley. He worked with the city's Information Technology Agency, or ITA, to launch the giveaway two years ago. For many of these families, it's their very first computer. Other families in Van Nuys, Baldwin Village, and San Pedro have also received them.
We're working very closely with local schools to identify families in need who don't have a computer at home, can't get the homework done, can't browse the internet, can't do the research that we all, many of us have become accustomed to. And so, we're giving them the opportunity with some training to be able to get out there and compete digitally with the rest of us.
Councilmember Wesson and other councilmembers bring this program to various communities within the city of LA. Something probably very few cities do anything like this throughout the country. And it's a very, very positive program and activity that literally you can see that the city is giving back.
And your neighborhood could be next. Stay tuned. In Reseda, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Around 85 computers were handed out. Well, turning now to a program where students help each other to succeed. City Year, part of the National AmeriCorps Program, held its 10th annual swearing-in ceremony with a fresh crop of volunteers. Anna Marcos takes a look.
You could say the young people in this City Year AmeriCorps Program are cheerleaders of sorts. Today, close to 300 volunteers are getting sworn into City Year Los Angeles, a nonprofit program that goes into schools in disadvantaged neighborhoods. The volunteers help teachers and students in the classroom with one-on-one tutoring, mentoring, and academic assistance for students with the highest need.
Each school year, one in four of our students drops out. In some of the communities we serve, the dropout rate is close to 50%.
I serve to basically be a shining star that lights the way for those who may be lost in the dark.
This is a great opportunity to give back to the community that I came from, and to also be able to work with students.
What you're doing is you're giving hope and inspiration to young men and women, young boys and girls who have so many obstacles laid in front of them through no fault of their own.
On its 10th anniversary, the City Year program is now in 28 LA schools, in places like Watts, South LA, Boyle Heights, and Pico Union. Mayor Eric Garcetti spoke to the volunteers through video.
A recent study showed that students at City Year schools are up to three times more likely to improve their math and English scores. They have better odds of crossing that finish line on graduation day.
We are building a movement that truly will change the world.
This year, City Year Corps members, there is a hate that is directed at our kids and their families and their communities that has a national stage unlike we have seen in generations.
(Crowd cheering)
Many of these young people are college graduates who themselves have taken advantage of academic programs in their neighborhoods. Now they are ready to pay it forward and help other students like them succeed. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
My name is Alex, and you know what I got.
What do you got?
In its 10 years, the City Year program has helped more than 27,000 students succeed. Well, maybe you or someone you know is an older adult who can no longer drive. Well, that shouldn't stop them from exploring Los Angeles, especially since Metro is offering group tours for seniors on how to use public transit. Gil Reyes has more from Union Station. Gil.
Well, Yana, here in car-centric Los Angeles, the philosophy has been for years that if you were too old to drive, then that was it. You were relegated to your home or your living room all day with nowhere to go, but not so anymore, especially with so many options on Metro available. And there are groups out there to help you make the transition. Barbara Jaden leads what's known as the On the Move Riders Club from her home city of Duarte. Once a week, this group of older adults gets together, rides Metro, and explores all the great things Los Angeles has to offer without ever driving.
So, this club came along at just the perfect time for me, and I've met all kinds of new friends and new adventures. Every week is a new adventure. Santa Monica is always a popular destination, and now that we can get there on the Gold and then on the Expo all the way, that's always a popular one. Naples Island, but that's totally with buses, out of El Monte Station, and cruised Naples Island, end up at Belmont Pier Brewery. I don't know if that's the name of it, but it's a nice little restaurant down there.
These group tours are free, except for the fare and the price of lunch. The goal here is to encourage more seniors to use public transportation, seniors who've spent most of their lives driving but might be intimidated to make the switch.
We're hoping that, you know, after several trips, a person would feel like, oh, okay, this isn't so hard, and I can do this, and, oh, I learned about Route, you know, 25, and it goes right by the Trader Joe's that I love. Why don't I just go on my own?
Roughly 25,000 older adults ride Metro every year. Some of the newer ones have gathered here at this symposium at Union Station to learn about some of the secret perks, like senior discounts. It's just 75 cents for one-way trips, 35 cents during non-peak hours.
And we also hope that we will inspire older adults to get out of their houses and go places, because who wants to grow old sitting in your living room? They're learning about their city and their county, and they're having fun and meeting other people, too.
If you can't join a club, just get out and travel with your friends, because there's so many places to go that are right near train stations.
So, ride Metro, explore Los Angeles, and savor the good life. At Union Station, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Now, Metro has On the Move Clubs in Silmar, Chinatown, and Mar Vista, and is looking to establish more. If you want to start a group or join an existing one, call the number on your screen, 213-922-2299. Well, heading south to Watts, where a two-day festival took attendees on a musical journey around the world, all without having to leave a historic part of Los Angeles. Rasha Goel has more on the celebrations.
It's a day of celebrating indigenous drums, music, dance, and art represented by different cultures, but all under one hub, at the Watts Towers Art Center.
It's so multicultural, it's so family-oriented, and we have the best talent in the city onstage.
And there was certainly plenty of talent on hand at this 55th anniversary of the Watts Towers Art Center, which has been the hub of artists and their artwork for decades.
Sometimes we don't get our fair coverage on the media, but Watts is a very rich, rich place culturally. We may be challenged economically, but we're very rich in culture.
After all, the Watts Towers were built by Italian immigrant Simon Rodia. Building this masterpiece was his obsession for 33 years.
We've got to acknowledge where we came from. He started all of this. He was recycling before it was vogue.
The famed Watts Towers have served as the backdrop for a festival that has become a tradition for so many.
This has evolved into a cultural event as opposed to just a family event.
An entire weekend dedicated to the rich cultural diversity that makes up the city of angels. I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Now, if you have kids, then you've probably heard about Pokemon Go. The game is a worldwide sensation, and the city is using it to attract more visitors to area parks. Gil Reyes has more.
The Department of Recreation and Parks has figured out a way to lure visitors to one of LA's best-kept secrets.
Today's been pretty great. Today's been pretty great, like, a lot of families, a lot of kids.
Welcome to the Exposition Park Rose Garden near USC. The seven-acre park is on the National Register of Historic Places, but because it's hidden behind the Natural History Museum, many Angelinos didn't know it existed until now. After invitations went out on social media to play the popular game Pokemon Go here...
It's on a phone, whether you have an iPhone or a Galaxy, and you download the Pokemon app. And what the goal is, first you join a team, and there's different levels. Levels one, you can go all the way up to past 30, and that's depending on how many Pokemons you're able to get. So, the more you play, the more Pokemons you get, raises the level, and you go around your community or wherever you may live, and you battle for gems and Pokemon, and it's a good opportunity to be outdoors and play the game.
The Department of Recreation and Parks set up Pokemon Gym Battles and Lure Fests at other locations from Griffith Park to Cabrillo Beach. Players, mostly young people, get their exercise in and explore places they never visited, while others get a chance to sell their wares.
This is a Poké Glove, and it's the world-first glove with a built-in battery, and basically charges your phone with a battery in the back of your hand. And so, the phone doesn't die, since Pokemon Go is an app that drains your battery pretty quickly.
Cashing in on the craze is yet another way to score. At the Exposition Park Rose Garden, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Handsome Dam Recreation Center in Lakeview Terrace and Travel Town near the LA Zoo also hosted Pokemon Go Gym Battles. Well, over at City Hall, it was a party aimed at helping the hearing impaired get connected, socialize, shop, and get access to important city services. The annual Deaf Festival LA rolled into action with an added conversational twist. Anna Marcos has more.
At this festival, people were not only speaking in tongues, but in American Sign Language. The hand gestures of ASL were everywhere, as the annual Deaf Festival LA kicked off on the steps of City Hall.
This is an opportunity to come and have a wonderful time with people not so much like you, but you can learn, learn to sign here.
Entertainment, vendors, artwork, food trucks, and all kinds of city services helped cater to the hearing impaired, but folks with normal hearing were also welcome.
This is a one-stop shop for people to pick up resources, connect with one another, network. This is a really important and sometimes neglected or not thought-of community.
Deaf individuals, families, and communities really see themselves as a whole culture. And I think, you know, we're working very hard in the city of Los Angeles to make sure they're recognized as a culture, just like other folks are.
From train sets to high fashion, this festival had a little something for every taste.
Oh, but we have a fashion show. You know how the people go like, mm, 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 and the hair.
Basically, a good old homegrown community festival like any other, but with a lot lower decibel level and a lot more expressive hand movements. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Councilmember Mitchell Farrell says the city is trying to be more responsive to the hearing impaired. It has installed more video remote interpreting services at libraries and other locations in the city. Well, Councilwoman Nuri Martinez stands up for women's health rights. A staple in the community is honored on its golden anniversary, and a call goes out to all LA artists to take part in a special exhibit. All these stories in City Beat. Councilwoman Nuri Martinez recently joined the Los Angeles Coalition for Reproductive Justice to praise passage of a resolution that reinstated abortion care insurance coverage for all women regardless of income, insurance, or where they live. The group asked the city council to lift restrictions on abortion care coverage so that every woman can make a decision that is right for her. They're also calling on Congress to repeal the Hyde Amendment, which prohibits using federal funds to pay for abortion care.
No woman, particularly the most vulnerable in our society, should be forced into an unwanted or dangerous pregnancy by a Washington DC politician.
Councilmember Jose Huizar and Councilmember Karen Price honored the two-time Stanley Cup-winning Los Angeles Kings on their 50th season. The organization, which supports and contributes to many local groups in the community, also announced a $1 million donation to the YMCA to get more kids involved in hockey.
We're going to get hockey sticks in over 5,000 kids' hands, and we think that could really make a big difference.
LA's Housing and Community Investment Department is calling for submissions to be part of a first-of-its-kind exhibit called "The Phases and Faces of Affordable Housing in Los Angeles." The exhibit will run from mid-March through April 2017 and will focus on the human cost of homelessness and the lack of affordable housing in Los Angeles. Between 30 and 50 images and videos will be selected based on creativity, originality, quality, and adherence to the focus of the exhibit. You may submit as many photos, videos, and stories as you like. For information on submissions, visit hcidla.lacity.org/phasenandfaces. An all-new stop sign was installed recently at the intersection of Mesa Avenue and Avenue 61 in Highland Park. This was made possible by community members who spoke at a special meeting of the Board of Public Works in Cypress Park last January. They requested a stop sign to be placed at the intersection. Can a mural really improve neighborhood pride? And the bottom line? Well, city leaders and one local merchant are counting on it, as they unveil a new business and a new public mural in Sun Valley. Here's Anna Marcos with more.
At Raspado Express, the motto is "A little bit of street art is good for business and good for the soul." The party helped celebrate the grand opening of the restaurant in Sun Valley and the unveiling of the mural "Childhood" on one of its outside walls.
A lot of my murals have to do with social justice. So, there's, you know, books that were banned in Arizona, there's immigration rights, there's environmental justice, global warming, saving water, just kind of make people more conscious of what's happening around the world.
Owner Oscar Limon also put in his own two cents worth when it came to the creative effort.
I thought about having childhood memories of kids playing. I feel like kids are losing that sense of, like, street playing, and that was my motivation.
For community members, artists, and non-artists alike, mural art like this is a giant step forward for Sun Valley.
I like seeing young people develop and learn to express their talent in a more positive way than writing on windows and walls.
I hope that kids get involved, but we've got to create that environment for them. We've got to make it cool, and we've got to find them a place where they can express all that good stuff.
Kristy Sandoval's mural work is now featured at five different sites in the valley. Her public art can also be seen in cities around the country and even in Turkey. But for this valley girl, nothing beats art that beautifies and revitalizes your very own neighborhood. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The mural "Childhood" can be found near the corner of San Fernando Road and Sunland Boulevard. Well, celebrate the Day of the Dead, get a behind-the-scenes peek at some of LA's most popular cultural destinations, and your favorite Haunted Hayride will have you running for cover. All this and this week's Things to Do.
Hollywood Forever Cemetery brings to life the largest Day of the Dead celebration in California during its 17th Annual Dia de las Muertes festival. The cemetery grounds are covered with art exhibitions, dance rituals, musical performances, children's arts and crafts projects, and food vendors aplenty. You'll see altars to the dead created by community artists, and you can either watch or participate in the skeleton costume contest. Join the fun on Saturday, October 29th, at the Hollywood Forever Cemetery located at 6,000 Santa Monica Boulevard. For more, visit ladayofthedead.com. It's an all-access pass and day-long free event to some of the best of the arts, highlighting the art-centric stretch of Grand Avenue between Temple and Sixth Streets. The Center Theater Group, LA Phil, the Music Center, the Broad, and the LA Public Library all open their doors for a truly one-of-a-kind experience. Take an inside look at rehearsals, architecture tours, museum exhibitions, performances, workshops, food and drinks for all to enjoy. So, grab the whole crew to take a peek behind the scenes for the ultimate Los Angeles field trip. It all happens on Saturday, October 29th, on Grand Avenue. For thrill seekers, check out Los Angeles Haunted Hayride. The famed Griffith Park attraction takes folks on a ride through the old zoo, where they'll face the underworld and portrayals of the seven deadly sins. This year features a brand-new theme, "Secret Society." Inside the gates of the society, members will bear witness to the clandestine lives of their faction, and in a shocking turn, will be commandeered by the society and sent into an initiation confronting the ghosts of Hayride's past on foot, face-to-face. That's right, for the first time ever, guests will leave the safety of the hay wagon. The adventure begins at 7:00 PM on October 28th. Visit losangelishuntedhayride.com for more. And that's a look at some things to do.
Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning, good morning. If I could have asked you to take your seats. It is Friday, October 28th. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. The public is welcome. We are not at a quorum as of yet, but we have presentations today. And I think we should start off with our presentations. So Bob, or I see the back of his head. So I'd like to, Mr. Blumenfield, if you're ready, why don't we start with one of your presentations? So the floor is yours.
Yes, come join me. You can stand right up here with me and so you can be on the cameras as well. So colleagues, I'm here today and I'm proud to recognize group The Advancement of Research for Myopathies, which is a nonprofit dedicated to speeding up biomedical research to find a cure for hereditary inclusion body myopathies, or HIBM. It's a rare disease, so many of you may not have heard of it. So I think it's important that we talk about it here in front of you, in front of the audience, and in front of the television-watching audience. Because every year, unsuspecting young adults are diagnosed with HIBM, which is a rare muscle-wasting disorder from which no treatment is yet available. ARM's mission is to support and inform patients and their families to raise funds for research and to encourage researchers to study this rare disorder. This organization offers a ray of hope with research funding, support, and an expanding campaign of public awareness. They have become the leading source of information, hope, and knowledge for HIBM patients worldwide, and offer scientific grants to research centers who are interested in working toward development of a treatment. ARM was founded by brothers Babak and Daniel Darvish. I have with me the Darvish family and my good friend John Ardalon. In fact, it was through John that I got to meet Sheila and the family. And I learned about this disease and the amazing work that the Darvish family is doing in combating this disease. And that's one of the reasons I really wanted to have them here, to expose people to both this rare disease and the amazing things that are happening. It's great to have Dr. Daniel Darvish here today. Now with both brothers, while in their late twenties, they began to feel symptoms. And Babak, who was an avid guitar player, found it harder and harder to play. Daniel, who had completed his medical training, found that he wasn't moving as quickly around the hospital as he used to. They went to specialists, but nobody could offer a satisfactory diagnosis. But these folks were determined to figure out what was going on. And after doing their own research, after doing their own research, they realized that they may be suffering from this rare genetic disease, HIBM. They traveled to Israel to meet with the only doctors who were actually investigating the genetic cause of this condition. And when they were returned home, they were determined to raise awareness about this disorder and create an avenue to secure public funding for research. And over the years, the group that they started, ARM, has awarded over $1 million to groups to research for research around the world. And they continue to be the only available group providing money and support for HIBM research programs in the United States. They continue to raise community awareness, conduct research, and basically are a family that is devoted to fighting this disease. And I have every confidence, given the dedication that I've seen with these folks, that they are going to help find a cure. So it is a pleasure to have them here, and I wanted to introduce the Dr. Daniel Darvish to see if you'd like to say a few words.
Doctor, welcome.
Bob, thank you so much for that introduction. Well, many of you may not know, rare diseases is a pretty big problem. Out of 8,000 rare diseases, it affects over 25 million Americans. Majority of them are not even in medical books yet. And in addition to HIBM, which we helped develop the animal model and test multiple therapeutic therapies on, a few of those therapies are now in clinical trials, much of it because of our activities. And we couldn't do it without the help of the community, so I wanted to thank everybody who helped us along the way as well. We realize that our work is far from over. There is many other rare diseases that disproportionately affects minority groups, especially people of Middle Eastern descent who live in the US. And we identified a number of other disorders, and we developed genetic screening and testing for it, up to about 20 different disorders. And we're in the process of improving both our techniques and adding a number of genetic disorders that disproportionately affects that community. This is the first step to both increasing awareness and moving faster towards prevention and accelerating the development of treatment. And this work is really important, and it affects families in a way that's unspeakable. And if we can help prevent such disorders and develop treatments for it, it's one of the most important things we can do in our lives. For this activity, there was good examples in the past, such as TESAC, this disease in the Ashanazah Jewish population. And through awareness and testing now throughout the world, almost no cases of TESAC are found in the Ashanazah Jewish population. So we can deploy the same type of activities within the Middle Eastern population who live in the US. And I would welcome anybody who's interested in this work to contact us. We do need help both for awareness and for expanding our reach to make sure that people are able to take advantage of what we're doing in our services. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, cutting-edge work being done right here in Los Angeles, right in the San Fernando Valley, for an important mission. And so in addition to wanting to bring you here, I wanted to recognize the group, Advancement of Research Myopathies, ARM. So I'd like to present you this certificate, and we could please accept this on behalf of the entire city for an appreciation of the work that you're doing, and also, all of our collective hope that you will continue to do this and find a cure for this and the other diseases that you're working on. Thank you.
Again, thank you so very much. And thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscagino, Sidio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Root, Wesson, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Price moves, and Mr. Corretts seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Corretts moves, and Mr. Price seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to items 1 through 4. Are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, we're on items 1 through 4. Any specials? I don't see any. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Continue.
Next is items 5 through 11. Those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Ms. Martinez.
Can we call six special?
We'll hold item 6 per Ms. Martinez's request. Mr. Bonin.
Could we send item 9 back to T Committee?
Okay, without objection, item 9. That'll be the order.
Mr. Pres-
Yes.
Just for the record, no action is required for item number 8 inasmuch as council adopted this item on March 16th, 2016.
Okay, so let's move on to our next, or is that it? That brings us where?
Mr. President, council has cards on 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, and 11, sir.
Okay, we sent 9 back to committee. So is there any items available for us to vote on now?
At this time, no, unless council wants to hear the cards, sir.
Okay. You know, so that we can move things quickly, I think what I want to do is, is I want to get Mr. Previn to come forward. Mr. Previn, you have cards on 6 and item 10. So that's... So let's give him his 3, and then he'll have his 1 minute. Okay?
Right. 6, 10, and the public comment, correct?
6 and 10, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. And what an exciting day here in John Farrow Chambers, as we have present finally Mr. Michael Fure. So for the public comment, I will share a small point with him. Item number 6 today, I have to say thank you in spirit to both Krikorian and Martinez, who once again are fighting for, in particular, I believe, women to not be... People, we don't want people who are being paid less to be discounted and paid less when they're applying for a job that should be paid at fair market value. So they're asking for the city to look at that and find ways that we might be able to do that. So I'm on board with that. I just do not want it to be that we don't have access to stuff. We have to find a way to compel the employer, in this case, the city, to take people at the fair market value, but we should not find a way to... Because imagine if someone had, you know, a very high salar... We just want to be able to see people's salaries. It's just part of the public way, and I do appreciate the effort, because I know it's coming from the right place. And I'm sure the city attorney, who is crafty, sneaky, and effective, will find a solution that works to make that on the right side of justice, hopefully, for these employees. So thank you. Item number 8, I'm gonna give 10 seconds, but I won't take more-
Now you have 6 and 10.
Sorry, 10, 10. They're all the same, sir. These are ones which were, Mr. Bonin is looking to eliminate 22-foot, 7-foot-high things from parking on the street.
6 and 10.
And not that? It is. So yes, let's not quibble with one another, sir. It doesn't look good in front of our guests. So, yeah, it's again, it's one of these parking restriction areas, and there have been many, is what my point is. So I would give 10 seconds to, just to be sure that this is... Because if we push every single neighborhood in a... Because if we push every single neighborhood into a private little parking district, you can't put it here, you can't put it there, it does raise the question, where in the world can anybody park? And in Studio City, we are facing Mr. Krikorian's releasing his hold on preferential parking districts, which is related to this, because it's the same problem. We have too many cars, not enough spots. And I do think we have to look long and hard at what we're doing strategically. And I know that guys like Bonin and the DOT study this carefully, but maybe they could explain how this is gonna work, because we have people in Studio City, for example, who say, "If you do a preferential district over there, aren't they all gonna park in my area?" And the answer is, yes. So that's our problem with this one, and hopefully we can find a way also not to remove people who are trying to rest at night for no good reason. We got into trouble with Carol Sobel on that one multiple times. We cannot do that. Even though we are trying our best to provide some kind of housing for people who don't have it, we're not doing a great job. So I know we are working on that, and thank you. Now, is it time for the public comment now?
Yes, one minute. Share for general public.
So, Mr. Fuhr, I'm gonna do only 15 seconds, because I've repeated and I've sent it to you. We have to look at who is voting on behalf of the CD7 constituents very closely, and the answer is nobody. So that needs to be remedied by some appointment of a CD7 resident in accordance with the city charter. Thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson, and all of you, the County Board of Supervisors on Tuesday stumbled in the approval of a women's facility in Miraloma that is in a hotbed of valley fever. It's called a hotspot, technically. This is a women's facility jail for 1,500 people that we should not do, we should not build it. You should write them a letter today and say, "My God, you've gotta be kidding," because this is a very, very vulnera... The women and individuals who are most vulnerable are pregnant women, African Americans, Filipinos, to this particular illness. So we must do everything. We heard from that moving testimony by Bloomfield scientists today, and my God, talk about situations that we can avoid. We don't want to ever be sued. We are sending people into an area where they are vulnerable. So let's not do it.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Mr. Walsh, please come forward. Yeah, your 3 minutes, your items 5, 6, 7, and 11, and your general public comment. Mr. Walsh, please come forward.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential. Number 5, REAP, Rent Escrow Account Program. Remember, when you do a good job, I say you do a good job. Thank you for doing a good job for the renters. I've never had any complaints. Next, 6, All Employees... This is a great one. Seeking... If you come to here and fill out a form to get a job, you don't have to tell how much money you made in your last job. That's how... So people here are getting $50,000 and $60,000, and in their last job, they were getting $12,000. Number 7, this concerns immigrant initiative integration. You're hiring 2 people at $90,000 a year. You don't need any new people. You have enough people for immigrant integration. But this is all about the friends of people, the friends of Mike Fuhr and other corrupt politicians. Number 9 is... This is parking restrictions for oversized vehicles. I want everyone to realize, if you live in a black neighborhood or an Hispanic neighborhood, the oversized trucks destroy your neighborhood, because you have the wrong color skin. You gotta be like this all-white jury here. Now, if you're Jewish like me, and you live west of La Brea, you pick up the phone, talk to Mr. Corretts, and all of a sudden you get-
On the subject, Mr. Walsh.
The subject is oversized parking, and these 2, that's what I'm talking about.
You should be on item 11.
Listen, I'm telling you, the oversized parking vehicles, Marina Del Rey, all those areas where they don't allow black people to live, where they don't allow Hispanics, they're getting the oversized vehicles. And guess where the oversized vehicles are going? Into black and Hispanic neighborhoods, because this is a racist city council, in particular-
Stay, stay... No, 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 on the subject.
And number 11, these are the maps. They sneak this thing through. So when you see, you live east of La Brea, and you see a huge building, but now they're moving west of La Brea into the Jewish neighborhoods. Watch out, my fellow Jews. This is your final maps. This is, when you see someone building a huge skyscraper across the street, why? Because you didn't come down here and check the maps, and they changed the maps, and now they're able to build a skyscraper next to you. They've started on the west side, because if you think your Jewish skin is gonna change the developers, these are an all-white, all Gentile jury up here. Now I'm going to my minute of public comment. Measure M, no on measure M, the infinity tax. Let me tell you what they're doing at MTA. At MTA, they've now banned all members of the public from their library. In other words, they want you to give them another half-cent sales tax, another $700 million a year forever. Your great-great-great-great-great-grandchildren will be paying this tax. And where's the money gonna go? It's gonna go into the pocket of the construction companies, the people who built the subway, which is falling apart. Vote no on M, because if you vote yes on M, this half-cent forever sales tax, they're gonna be back with another one, and another one, and another one, till they're up to 15, 16, 17% of anything you buy, you have to pay a surcharge. No on measure M.
Okay, if I could have Yvonne, Michelle Autry, please come forward. Ms. Autry, 1 minute. Item 10.
I had also requested public comment. I was in the process of also submitting a request to speak on number 10 or 11, just so I could have another minute.
Well, you just speak on the item, you'll get your public comment, but speak on this item. This is what you have a card on, item 10.
Well, I was gonna combine my comments, however, I'd still like to speak, just in encouragement of making parking available, I'd also like to speak in creating more transit or transportation that would discourage so many drivers and commuters from downtown, so parking is a part of that. But I really just wanted to speak on the civil rights issues concerning women and other residents downtown, economically challenged people. However, parking is a situation that affects all of us. If you increase public transit, that makes it available.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Autry. I'll call you later for a public comment. Thank you. You're now disrupting, Ms. Autry. Your time is over. Thank you so much. Please take your seat. Please, no, please take your seat. Thank you. Please take, please take your seat. Okay, let's take some votes at this point. Let's vote on items 5, 7, 10, and 11. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. President, there is a request to have item 11 go forth with, sir.
Okay, with out objection, that'll be the order. In fact, Mr. Weezer, are you ready? We're ready for you. Are you ready? Okay.
Hey, Hal? Want to come on up? Oh, I know. Thank you very much, and good morning, everyone and colleagues. I am honored, as we recognize downtown's fiercest soldier, the most unwavering advocate, and someone we have all grown to admire, respect, and love. We're talking about Carol Schatz, the president and CEO of the Central City Association of Los Angeles.
Let's give Carol a round of applause. Because you don't want her beating us up, so let's give...
She is retiring after 26 years with CCA. And let me warn you, I may speak a little longer than usual today. And that's because normally Carol does all the talking, and we do all the listening. But today, after 26 years, it's finally our turn for Carol to listen a little bit to us. Born and raised in Los Angeles, Carol has spent a lifetime committed to our city, and I needed to mention this after last night's loss, but she has a Bachelor's of Arts degree from the University of California at Berkeley. She received a Juris Doctorate from Loyola Law School here in L.A. And now I know where she got her argumentative style from. I didn't know after a while that she was an attorney, actually. Upon graduating, Carol declared that she didn't want to practice law in the typical sense, and a not-typical career is exactly what she received. Carol first joined the CCA in 1990 and became the first woman ever to serve as president and CEO of the organization in 1995. Back then, downtown Los Angeles looked very different from what it does today. It was long before the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance that brought tens of thousands of residential units to downtown and got a renaissance going, long before thousands of retailers, big and small, reinvested in downtown, long before we collectively ushered in new parks, green spaces, bike lanes, and pedestrian improvements, and long before Carol was proclaimed queen of downtown L.A. But Carol had a vision, and she had a vision of downtown that would become an unwav... And she would be unwavering in her efforts to see it realized. Her challenge was not just to make sure other people understood her vision, but that they believed it and believed that it could happen. And in large part due to her sheer will, as we all know, it most certainly happened and is happening today. She made people understand what downtown L.A. could become and assembled the political will and support necessary to enact the necessary change. Carol Schatz was the driving force behind the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance, working with the city and state to provide funding and incentives for developers to convert empty office buildings into residential units. That ordinance has resulted in over 18,000 new units of housing downtown. Carol also was a huge advocate for such transformative projects as Staples Center and L.A. Live, and more recently, it has been my pleasure to work with Carol in such projects as Grand Avenue, the Figaro Corridor, and our Bringing Back Broadway Initiative. Personally, it has been a great thrill to collaborate with Carol to take the next steps in DTLA development, as we introduced the new Commercial Adaptive Reuse Ordinance, making it easier to transform historic office buildings into new business opportunities. We also worked to remove the outdated Halli Pad requirement so that new construction projects are free to create a new dynamic downtown skyline that better reflects the aspiration, ingenuity, and creativity that a great city is known for. And together, we have seen downtown Los Angeles transformed into a 24-hour restaurant and entertainment destination that is recognized nationwide, if not worldwide. Very few people in our city's history have left a legacy as Carol has. If you look around downtown today, Carol's vision and accomplishments can be found everywhere. Gone are the vacant buildings, replaced by a vibrant urban core that is home now to nearly 60,000 residents and growing. New construction seems to be on every street, and new businesses are opening or relocating to downtown at a record pace. And most significantly, we have a vital and vibrant economic engine for the entire region, with more than 500,000 people who come to work each and every way, every day in downtown. And what Carol did for downtown, she also did for the Central City Association. Established in 1924, CCA has spent almost a century acting as a key business advocacy organization, representing major corporations, businesses, and nonprofits in Los Angeles. But when Carol Schatz became its leader, the needs were greater than ever before. Downtown had long declined. Hardly anyone lived here anymore, and buildings lay stagnant. It's why one of Carol's first critical steps towards downtown's revitalization was the creation of the Downtown Center Business Improvement District in 1998. As one of the city's first bids, the Downtown Center bid brought critical cleaning, safety, and business services to an area that needed it most. It allowed Carol the opportunity to keep fighting for economic development, policy changes, and urban revitalization at the CCA, while making sure work was being done on the ground to make this revitalization possible. Bringing hundreds, if not thousands, of property owners together in the center of downtown Los Angeles has set a model for the rest of L.A. and communities around the world. When Carol created the bid, it was still rather unheard of, save for the late, great Stanley Hirsch, who started the Fashion District bid. Both she and Stanley are true pioneers in making this possible. Today, we have over 40 bids in the L.A. area and hundreds across the country. The Central City Association's impact has only grown thanks to Carol's dynamic and determined leadership. Its 450 members employ more than 300,000 people in the Los Angeles region. The organization remains a key advocacy powerhouse for businesses and revitalization efforts in downtown Los Angeles. And that's why we're here today, to thank Carol's vision, leadership, not only for downtown, but CCA, and to thank her for over the $10 billion in wages, $1.2 billion in tax revenues, 24,000 new housing units, and residential population of nearly 60,000 in downtown Los Angeles. And because of all that, Carol has more certificates, resolutions, and accolades on her walls than the office has space for. And I'm sure we're gonna give her one more today, and I'm sure she's gonna put that in the center of all those resolutions. I offer a big congratulations to CCA's amazing run under Carol's leadership, and while it's the end of an era, it's also the beginning of the next great chapter for CCA. And I want to thank all the CCA members and staff who are here today, including the new president.
She's getting married today.
She's getting married today, Jessica Law. Let's give her a big round of applause.
She's got a good excuse.
She's got a good excuse. That's the only reason you excuse her, right?
Yeah. It's the only... Who are you waving at?
Lucy.
Well, Lucy, come on over, Lucy. Now, before we present Carol with our city resolution, we have a few special guests here today. Our guest is the great representative of the 53rd Assembly District, which includes downtown Los Angeles, our friend, Assembly Member Miguel Santiago. Please give him a big round of applause.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Council President and members. I'm honored here today to present Carol Schatz with a resolution from the state. But before I do, and we've heard a lot of good stuff about her, we've heard all the good stuff, and we won't repeat the bad stuff. But Carol Schatz really has become a dynamic force, both in politics and in policy, and any of us who have ever dealt with her understand what an impact she has. You know, a guy like me, who has only been in office for about 2 years as a state legislator, I can tell you that the moment that my election happened, she was on the phone with a long list of things that we needed to accomplish. This is a true story. Some of them who actually got enacted, some of the bills who actually got enacted, and some of the things that we struggled with to try to improve the city. But the best thing about Carol Schatz is that all this work that she's done, we can take credit for. And some of you don't know the funky side of Carol Schatz, because, you know, she's a hardballer, and she makes things happen, and... But, yep, she's a big fan of the Rolling Stones. Most of us don't know that. And she can dance. And we found that out a couple of Saturdays ago, for those of you who joined us. Man, she can cut a rug. She walked up to the DJ and asked the DJ to change the music, and she danced for hours. This is true, true story. And recently, we've also found that she likes to party in Las Vegas. In fact, the CCA board-
Could you repeat that? I'm writing all... I'm writing this down, Assembly Member.
Well, I didn't share the things that happened in Vegas. And, Council President, I'm smart enough not to, because she's still here at the bid. But in all fairness, in all fairness, I'm honored to call her a friend and somebody who's really helped revitalize downtown Los Angeles. What's happened in downtown could have not happened if we did not have a strong force like her pushing. And if you were to take a look at downtown Los Angeles decades ago, decades ago, where there was only a few hundred people living here, and it just looked like a little promise and a little hope that could happen here. But you take a look at what's happened in downtown Los Angeles now, with tens of thousands of people living in this area. We've got L.A. Live and the revitalization that now we know is the downtown renaissance movement. It would not have happened if it had not been for the powerhouse and the dedicated person that downtown Los Angeles now knows as the queen, Carol Schatz. And I want to present a resolution that I think we have right in front of us, that is signed by some of my colleagues who have the pleasure of working with Carol Schatz, Senator Holly Mitchell, who represents the area as well, and Senator Pro Tem Kevin De Leon. And on behalf of all 3 of us, Carol, it's a small token of our appreciation for the great work that you're gonna do. And I know that you've got a lot of certificates and resolutions from the city, but we hope that this one makes it on your wall. And thank you for all your hard work, my friend Carol.
Thank you, my dear. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I would also like to introduce our great city attorney, Mike Fuhr, who has known Carol for a very, very, very long time. Is that true?
True enough, yeah.
It had one very in my notes, but I know they've known each other for a very, very, very long time. And we appreciate him taking the time from his busy schedule to be here, but I know he wanted to be here for Carol. So welcome, our city attorney, Mike Fuhr.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. President, members, I, I am not going to speak long, but I did want to be here this morning, because I have known Carol for more than 20 years. And I feel, Carol, like I'm a groupie on the Carol Schatz Victory Tour, because Carol has been getting a lot of recognition recently. It's well-deserved. I, I wanted to stand here and say Carol is the personification of what it means to be smart, tough, tenacious, focused, and dedicated, traits that all of us can really benefit from in our own careers. It's been said that Carol's a powerhouse. Carol is a person who, through sheer force of will, arm-wrestled downtown into what it has become today. I remember on the City Council back in the 1990s, when I served and the Staples Center proposal came before us, Carol and I had a chance to work very closely together on that project. Whether one disagrees with Carol or agrees with Carol, one always comes away from those interactions knowing that she is there because she believes in her heart she's pursuing the right thing. She always makes the most compelling arguments possible. And I know, Carol, that we're going to have a wonderful successor, but I think that most of us believe that there is no one who can truly fill your shoes as a leader at CCA and a leader here in downtown Los Angeles, and all of us owe you a tremendous debt. Congratulations on a career well performed.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Queen of Downtown L.A.
No, 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 no.
Oh, that was a great introduction. You stopped me right in the middle.
You can, I have you do it again. I've got a couple of, a couple of members that would like to, to say something about Carol. And I think I'll start it off by, you know, all of us had little funny stories or what have you where it relates to Carol. We all know her, everybody that's ever been elected knows her. But I want to try to just be serious for one moment. I remember when I first met Carol and Fred downtown, for a lot of you folk that are new, when you left this building, you went immediately to the freeway so you could get the heck out of downtown. There was nothing to do, and after lunch, downtown was just closed. And if you look at all of the changes today, it's amazing to me that my friend Carol had something to do, played a role in every one of those changes. And that is really amazing for somebody like me that's been around the block several times to watch this city grow. And, you know, Carol has been up against all odds. I mean, there's so many times she comes before this body, and there might only be one person that supports her. And she has to get her votes one at a time, step by step, scratch by scratch, but it never stopped her, never deterred her. So anyway, I just want to say that it has been an honor, and it has been a pleasure. And you may be the queen, but you're like the spirit of downtown L.A. And all of us owe you a debt of gratitude. Let's give her another round of applause. Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I think, for me especially, as someone that's grown up in Los Angeles, lived my entire life in Los Angeles, and my father used to work downtown as a waiter at the L.A. Hilton, so I, I visited with some frequency as a kid. We kind of thought of downtown as a little bit of an armpit. It wasn't a place I ever envisioned growing back and becoming an economic engine and a beautiful place that it has now become. A number of historic buildings have been saved, and I think they were only there to be saved because there was such a lack of interest in doing anything downtown that no one wanted to demolish them and build something else. So that turned out well. But I think there's no question that you are really the driving force that has turned around an entire area, and probably the best area to be turned around, because it's the center of everything. It has transit, it has freeways, it's where a lot of this activity should be, and, and it is turning out that way. So I want to recognize you for that. I know not everyone will be hearing from you after this, but I'm sure I will, since you're still a constituent. So if, if you're anything like Zev in your retirement, you will be more active in my district, and I'll hear from you more. I do have to, one more time, and I've told this story a couple times at large gatherings, I have to admit, I had the worst job interview ever, and it was with Carol. It was entirely my fault. I had been in one interaction with CCA, and it was one where labor and business was together, and I thought CCA was a very progressive, pro-labor business group. And so I, I didn't do any research, and I was explaining my pro-labor background since birth. And clearly, we were both getting more and more frustrated. And at one point, she said, "Well, we have a lot of meetings at the New Otani, and there are a lot of protests. If there was a picket line, what would you do?" I said, "I would join it, of course." And, yes, and try to get arrested.
Watch your time.
And she said, "I'll keep your resume on file." And I said, "No, that's not necessary." But despite the worst job interview ever, I think you have been the best head of an organization ever, and have accomplished something I don't think any other human being could have accomplished. So I have to express my extreme gratitude for everything that you've done.
Mr. Price. Well said, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President, too. I, too, just want to stand and say I'm glad you, I mean, glad for all your years of service. Seriously, I know there, sometimes there was a difference of opinion on issues associated with the minimum wage, or, or banned the box, or, or paid benefits, but I always count on your honest and well-thought-out response. I know you always had the best interests of the city and of the businesses, and certainly of the downtown bid, and I certainly respect you for that. And you certainly have been such a real pioneer. The bid has, not just the downtown bid, but the other bids have really flourished because of the standard that you've set. And I'm just so proud to stand here today to say that I appreciated your, your service and, and your friendship, and your tough love. Usually, it's tougher, but, but there's always love there, and so we appreciate you, Carol. Keep up the good work, and we know that you're not going to be going away anytime soon. And so, congratulations.
Mr. Sadiya.
Carol, let me tell the favorite story of yours. For people who don't know this, I was actually a union leader and fierce advocate, like Mr. Coretts, when I entered politics. I was Vice President of all the AFL-CIO boards and committees, and a leader of SEIU. And I decided to run for office, and like Paul Coretts, I set up the perfect, worst interview that we could have, because I needed support from the business community. And so at 7:00 a.m. at the City Club, you, Alex Padilla, my campaign manager, and Richard Virtus, my advisor on all matters business, met at the City Club, and you said, you looked at my resume and said, "What the hell am I going to sell people about this?" And, and yet, we had a great conversation and talked about my experiences managing a small business, my experiences negotiating contracts and getting to a conclusion, and finding common ground. And it's one, I know it's one of your favorite stories to, to talk about. Let me say this behind your fierce advocacy, that people need to know that you are a person of integrity, that behind that fierce advocacy, that all our experiences are those of honesty, and that behind all of that, at the end of the day, away from the battles, away from the drama, the cameras, the acrimony and controversy, is a good friend. And I want to thank you for your friendship, thank your spouse, your family. You've been supportive of me during all my endeavors. And sometimes, it's not easy to be my best friend as well, and I recognize that. And yet, you've always been there for every initiative I've taken, always willing to listen, open-minded, and giving me that extra minute to try to make my case, as all of us are with you. And so thank you for that. The city is greater for your initiative, your work with our colleague, and building upon that foundation of the downtown rebound and that legislation is extraordinary. I'm so proud of that work, so excited about it that I even moved downtown. And every day, 60,000 people wake up in a place that didn't exist before, without displacement. They now live in a place of choice that brings them close in proximity to work, to transportation, to entertainment, and to a high quality of life. And every day, I think it's 650,000 people drive into the greater Los Angeles area for employment. All of that is because of your vision, your commitment, your fierce advocacy, and your love of the city. Thank you for your friendship. God bless you.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Carol, I'm going to miss your impeccable sense of style. You're a fashionista, my friend, but most importantly, I want to say you're just tenacious. You know, I respect the fact that this woman tells it like it is, and makes no apologies for taking a position, and takes it all the way and does what she says she's going to do. And the business that we work in, unfortunately, that is very rare. So for that, I respect you, and I look forward to working with you on your next endeavor.
Mr. Weezer.
Very much. We'll go ahead and present a resul right now to Carol and thank her...
Speaking to the mic?
Thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and present a resul right now and thank Carol for all her work. And I personally just also wanted to thank her. I wanted to read through all my notes, because I didn't want to miss anything about all the work she has done and the accomplishments or where we are today because of her work. But as some of my colleagues mentioned, what I've always liked about Carol, respected about Carol, is that whether we agreed with you or not, you are effective in representing the interests of downtown L.A. and the business community, and, and whatever position your constituents had taken, you're very effective in making this council, and all of us understand that perspective. And for that, not only were you great in what you were doing, but also you did it in a sense that laid out all the reasons why that was in the best interest of Angelenos, and what that meant for people living and working and having a business here in Los Angeles. So thank you very much, Carol. And one more to add to your collection. In the house, I hope you make room for it. On behalf of the city, on behalf of all our colleagues, congratulations on 26 years in the CCA. Thank you.
All right.
I'm, I'm uncharacteristically at a loss for words from this, from this lovely display of affection and respect. I thank you, Jose, first of all, for scheduling this and making sure that, that the recognition that I believe the City Council has, you know, reflected here in your comments, is here to give me, and I am, again, feeling very emotional about that. Herb, we go back, I don't even want to say how many years, and that's true of a number of people here, Gil, and I have, and will enjoy working, continuing to work with you as I run the Downtown Center BID. But it has been a labor, not always of love, but I, having grown up in Los Angeles, and was born in Los Angeles, in South Central Los Angeles, actually, downtown was not important. It wasn't important to my family. We'd come down here to get inexpensive Chinese food, you know, occasionally, when, when we could. And we just, it just wasn't a place that you went to. If someone would have told me at the beginning of my career, my law career, that I would be standing here before you and being honored for the work that I've done, I would have told them they were crazy, because downtown just didn't figure into my, into my lexicon of things that I wanted to do. I will tell you that when I got to CCA, it still wasn't clear to me that that was one of the things that I was going to be doing. But I have this problem that when I take a job, I intend to make a difference when I take it. And that was my guiding sort of light. And when I looked around and saw in 1990, as I walked through the streets, and that was a very terrible recession for us in downtown, I thought I was crazy. I would talk to myself as I walked around saying, "Schatz, you're nuts. This ain't coming back." You know, but we, and there were several people here, Hal Bastian was part of our original crew, and the very, the many staffs that had worked for me and gone on to, you know, glory on their own, wonderful elected officials. This is my, the fifth City Council that I've worked with, the fifth mayor, working with Herb when he was in the state legislature, when he was working with Yvonne, and just, you know, it has, I am very proud of what has been accomplished, but I want to make it clear here today that there were so many people that were there and fighting along with me and my members that I would love to acknowledge, too. The original developers, McGuire Thomas, Eli Broad, who stuck, stepped, stayed with Mocha while there was this tremendous push from the, and pull from the West Side to move our institutions there. That was true of USC, that was true of Orthopedic, that was true of California Hospital. But we persevered, and it was tough in the very beginning. I didn't think anything would happen. And now, we, you have all heard the statistics, I am very, very proud and pleased to have played a role in that. I cannot forget our friends at AEG, because clearly, that investment was a huge, just transformational change in downtown. I want to thank my very dear and loving husband, who, Fred Muir, who used to push me out of the way when he was working for the L.A. Times, when we were kibitzing around there, when the, when the council came back in session after, you know, you were, you, you had, you had, what's the word? You were in closed session. I, I got spun around the hall a little bit if I was in the way. And, but who has been a wonderful, wonderful champion for me, and who has been by my side during all of these years. And that hasn't been easy, because it takes a village to allow Carol Schatz to do once she's done. And couldn't do it without you, honey. Why don't you come up here? And Hal, I've recognized before, Jose, who's been a wonderful partner, and Jan Perry before you, and many other members of the City Council who did recognize the importance of what we are doing. And one of the things I want to say to you, and I haven't...
Okay.
And Hal, I've recognized before, Jose, who's been a wonderful partner, and Jan Perry before you, and many other members of the City Council who did recognize the importance of what we are doing. And one of the things I want to say to you, and I haven't forgotten you, but one of the things I want to say to all of you, and it wasn't always true, it wasn't true in the early '90s, every single one of you has made it clear to me that downtown is important to you, that you understand that it is now, and look what we've done, we've now made it the economic engine of the region. It wasn't before. And that has hugely benefited the city. But all of you have been champions for this, no matter what your district is, you know, West Side, Valley, whatever, you have all seen the importance of it. And that is very important for the people of Los Angeles. And so, we owe you thanks for your recognition of the value of what we're doing. And I know that you will keep it going, because it has such a benefit for everyone in the city. Everyone has benefited by this growth. I want to thank Mr. Santiago, who is, who, and he was right, we talked very early on, and he has been a champion for what we're doing. Mr. Santiago lives downtown in the Arts District, and so he has an understanding of the street-level issues that we have to deal with. And I greatly appreciate his partnership, if you will, with us to make, continue to make things happen. And that is my commitment, that as long as I'm vertical, I'm gonna do that. And who else? And I want to thank Lucy Roomontier, who's one of our great property owners with OUE, who purchased the U.S. Bank Building, my longtime friend Billy Greer, whom I know many of you know.
Yay!
And, I'm getting there, I'm getting there. And Suzanne Hawley, who is our chief operating officer and has become a dear friend, who represents all of the people that I have been lucky enough to work with. And obviously, this is not a one-person job, and the staffs that we, I've worked with have been a great benefit to all of you and to our business community. So with that, I think that's enough, and I am going to stop and thank you all again for this extraordinary recognition. I am very touched, and I'm very humbled by it. Thank you.
Let's give Carol another round of applause. Thank you. Thank you.
We certainly acknowledge that every great city needs a great downtown, and we're making it happen. Thank you very much, Carol.
And now, we're gonna turn it to Council President Herb Wesson and Council Member
Okay, we will, we will be brief. It is a very important time for me. This is Dog Adoption Friday, but Mr. Coretts tells me that this is National Cat Day as well. So we have a two-for-for you guys that are here today. I have with me Willie, that's his name. Willie, Willie's about four years old, looking for a home. He's a mixed terrier Yorkie. Anyway, he's, he's one heck of a dog. Look at him. And he's looking for a home, and we have a 100% adoption rate here in the city of Los Angeles where it relates to dogs. I can envision that anybody that needs a companion animal would not want to take this little guy home with them. So I am asking you, if you're in this building, or if you hear my voice, and you want to come and adopt Willie, we're gonna keep Willie here for a while. He's a phenomenal dog. If you can't get here quick enough to secure Willie as your companion animal, please call We have other shelters throughout the city of Los Angeles, and we have other great companion animals. And when you adopt one of our cats or one of our dogs, in essence, what you're doing, you're saving a life. So Mr. Coretts is asking you today to save a life of a little kitty cat, and I'm asking you to take Willie, Willie home, especially if you're looking for protection. Okay? He's, but anyway, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Coretts. And they like each other, right?
Yeah, these two actually are two of the mellower animals I've seen, and they seem to be friendly with each other. So you could also adopt them together if you want to take that approach.
A pet.
I'd like to thank Council President Wesson for letting me share a moment of his monthly dog adoption. I hope this will be a return to the Feline Fridays that we also used to do with cat adoptions. With the help of Animal Services, I have Samantha here, our feline ambassador for National Cat Day. National Cat Day is held every October 29th, which is tomorrow, and it's a day when cat lovers all over the country amplify their efforts to try and educate the broader public about how wonderful cats are, celebrate cats in our lives, and try to increase the adoptions of cats from our shelters. Samantha tells me she's available for adoption from Animal Services, along with many wonderful cats of all ages. She's two months old and just a beautiful and sweet kitty cat. And to honor the occasion, the department is offering great deals on cats of your choice at all the shelters. So I encourage you to go to the shelters if you don't get this one, if you're here in the building, if you can hear our voice. I'd say call my office if you want to adopt this particular cat, and we will connect you with her. And also, the phone number for our shelters is 888-452-7381 if you want to adopt Samantha. So this week, visit the city shelter near you and bring home a best friend, whether it's a cat or a dog, or two, or three. On National Cat Day, you can't do much better than a cat, though. Cats, unfortunately, still get euthanized in larger numbers in our shelters, so please adopt this cat and any others that you would like, you'll be saving their lives. So thank you very much.
I'm joining you over here. Appreciate all your patience. A lot of events today. So colleagues, and President, in an age where the lack of arts and education is plaguing public schools across the nation, teachers like Dr. Heather Penrod at Reseda High School are more necessary than ever. Heather spearheaded and coordinated the new arts, media, and entertainment magnet program for Reseda. This program gives students the freedom and tools to explore their artistic imaginations and develop original content. Students have access to state-of-the-art facilities, including a soundstage, an animation studio, and rehearsal space for dance and for music. Over the last year, Heather and students from Reseda High School teamed up with a nonprofit group called Streets Are For Everyone, or the acronym is SAFE. They teamed up with this nonprofit, SAFE, to tap into kids' creative spirit to write, produce, direct, act, and edit their own public service announcements about safe driving and traffic safety. Now, SAFE opened its doors a few years ago after their founder and executive director, Damian Kevitt, went through a tragic, life-changing experience. While bicycling through Griffith Park, Damian was the victim of a hit-and-run resulting in the loss of his leg. But out of this tragedy came a new vision, a vision to create an organization whose mission is to use sensible, proven strategies to prevent hit-and-run crimes and the events leading up to them, making our seats, our streets safer for all users, whether they're walking, biking, driving, or whatever form of transportation they're using. This partnership between Reseda High School and SAFE not only educates students about this important issue, but it also offers them a great opportunity to use the visual arts to foster creativity and create original content. Out of this experience, SAFE has developed a multi-school contest called Streets: Art Safe, that will bring this concept across the city. Many great things start in Reseda and flow across the city, and this is one of those great things. Next year's grand prize winner will receive a monetary grant to their institution's art program and will have their work aired on television. As a special treat, we're gonna watch one of the PSAs that have come out of Reseda High School this year. And with that, I'd like to say, let's roll the tape. If we have the tape. Amazing PSA, just an indication of the kind of work that they've done. I want to introduce the folks that are here with me. Damian Kevitt, who I mentioned before, who had the vision for this, he's the executive director of SAFE, is here. We have Dr. Heather Penrod from Reseda High School. We have a number of students here. Omar Rojas Cruz, the executive producer. Danielle Eliahu, director, editor, and actor. Eton Cheng, the camera editor. Ara Adzatian, the editor and actor. Aaron Greenfield, a concept artist and actor. And I think, Daniel, you gonna say a few words? Or Kevin, do you want to introduce? Daniel, please.
Firstly, I would like to thank you, Blumenfeld and council members, for acknowledging the work that we have done in conveying the theme of traffic safety in these public service announcements. For me personally, traffic safety means a lot, because I almost became a victim of a car collision myself, and I was roller skating across the street, and before I knew it, a car had slammed the brakes right in front of me. And ever since then, it was just so traumatic, and traffic safety meant so much more to me than just an indifferent concept. And working alongside Damian and Streets Are For Everyone has since then been such a great experience, and especially working with the people at our school in helping create what we have created today. And with regard to L.A. becoming a Vision Zero city, I think it's an excellent step in the right direction. However, I do think that it may be pushed more extensively, because there are still people being victimized by car collisions today, and I think that we have to do whatever we can as a city to ensure that people won't become victimized by such tragic events. And thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to roll the other?
Yeah.
Do you want to say a few words first?
I want to thank all of the City Council members. That's my Boosqueano, hello, sir. Martinez, Coretts, Corrian. It's an honor to be here today to work with these students who have really been amazing. Also, Dr. Penrod, who's really been spearheading this program, thank you. It's been quite an opportunity. And you'll see in this next particular video, which has to do with skateboarding and being safe skateboarding and cycling, really the creativity of these students in making these PSAs comes out. So with that, let's roll the video.
streets safer and educate us. So I have a certificate for SAFE, for Streets Are For Everyone. I want to present this to all of you in recognition of the great work that you're doing and in anticipation of all the wonderful things that you will continue to do. So please accept the small token on behalf of the entire City Council.
Mr. Blumenfeld, for just a second, we have Mr. Corrian. No, okay. Never mind, congratulations. Thank you for being here.
Well, good morning again, colleagues. Today, I'd like to honor three very important members of Council District Five for their dedicated service on the Westwood Design Review Board, Terry Tippett, Kenneth Corman, and Jan Williams. And design review boards play a crucial role in promoting orderly, attractive, and harmonious development, and these members have given countless hours and many years to ensuring a very high design and architectural standard for Westwood Village. Westwood Village is unique because it has beautiful cultural resources, with many of its structures influenced by Mediterranean and Spanish colonialism and revival architecture. The Westwood DRB is tasked with maintaining the integrity and design of a structure while also considering its unique architectural character and environmental setting of the Westwood Village. And I'm forever grateful to these board members for volunteering their time and keeping a keen eye to detail and offering their unwavering commitment to quality. And on and off the DRB, Terry, Jan, and Kenneth have demonstrated their leadership and value to the Westwood community and city at large, which we greatly appreciate. Just giving a little bio on each one, Terry Tippett has been an advocate in the community for over 40 years, was the chair of the Westwood DRB, also co-founder of the Westwood Neighborhood Council and currently serves as its chair. She became, began her community involvement at Overland Avenue School and is a former PTA president. And when she realized her neighborhood didn't have much of a voice on the issues impacting her community, she co-founded and is currently president of West of Westwood HOA since back in 1985. And in 2001, she co-founded the Westside Neighborhood Council and guided its certification and is currently its chair as well. And she has served on the Westwood Design Review Board since 1993 and is chair for 17 years. Kenneth Corman was raised in Westwood and attended Fair And if I could ask for a few moments and ask for Terry Tippett to say something on behalf of the group.
Terry, it's just such a treat to see her today, and yes, you can ask for a few minutes. Hey!
Hey, we go back more decades than we want to admit to, and I'm so glad you were able to come back in. You missed the whole brief bio, but anyway, many of you know me. I am a Sherro from Assemblyman Then Prize, who is now a councilman. Mike Bonin and I go back decades as well. This is an honor for me to be here, receiving this, instead of coming here to testify and beg you guys to help me. And although I've been here for many years, and a lot of times, you guys have helped me in issues, and other times, we agreed to disagree, but we've never lost the respect we've had for each other. This is a body I do respect and hold very dear to me. So I want to thank Councilman Corretts for taking the time to honor me today and my colleagues who are here as well. And I am not going anywhere because I'm still Neighborhood Council Chair, for which I want to thank you, Herb, for taking the leadership to try and prove the Neighborhood Councils, and thank you for the 5,000 extra you're giving us this year.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's give her a round of applause. And just, Mr. Corretts, just quickly, you can't say enough about the residents of this city who go above and beyond, when they could be doing so many other things. But, and she's right, I don't know how many decades we've known each other, but she has never just taken care of herself. She's always been engaged in every, and it's not just one issue. It's wherever there's a need, she's always there. And it's because of people like you that make this the greatest city on the planet. Let's give Terry another round of applause.
Thank you, Herb.
Terry, and let's take a picture.
You brought me on the other side?
No, no, not him.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more, one more, one more.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it very much.
All right, over there? Hey, if you break it, you buy it. I see we have Tanua and our new petroleum administrator in the audience with us today, and I want you to know that you guys just won Willie. So, every new, every new high-level employee, we give an adopted bet to. Now, with that said, I'd like to go to item six right now, and Alex, you have a card on you? Okay, we're on item six. Mr. Davis, Alex Davis from VICA.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, council members. My name is Alex Davis. I'm the Legislative Affairs Manager at VICA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. We represent over 400 local businesses and nonprofits. And I'd like to first thank Councilwoman Martinez for her leadership on this item and for ensuring that the salary gap is closed in Los Angeles. The business owners agree that overt salary disparities based solely on gender have no place in Los Angeles. However, given the breadth and the scope of this motion, we ask that the council allow due time for affected stakeholders to fully review the motion. We ask that the reports from the city attorney fully analyze the fiscal effect of the proposal and to consider other alternatives that may be more effective and less burdensome for businesses. VICA appreciates the opportunity to comment on this item and asks that the item receive the opportunity for a public comment when it goes back to committee. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking for Ms. There, she is. Ms. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I want to thank VICA for being here this morning. Colleagues, this motion was inspired by AB 1676 authored by Nora Campos, which initially sought to prohibit the employers from seeking job candidate's salary history. AB 1676 was amended to state that salary history by itself cannot justify any disparity in compensation and removed any portion that removed the salary history from the job application. The bill was recently signed by Governor Jerry Brown. As amended, I don't believe that AB 1676 goes far enough. A woman with the same work experience as a man, but with a lower salary history, should not be penalized as she advances throughout her career. There are several instances, even within our building, of women with the same qualifications as a man and doing the same job as a man, has been penalized for not giving the same pay because of her previous salary history. So my motion is asking for two things. It's asking for the city attorney to look into what steps we can take as a city to try to narrow the gap for women who live and work within the city, or women who work for companies who do business with the city of Los Angeles. The second request is that personnel come back with a report on the feasibility of eliminating salary history information from the city's employment application. We already know that within city government workforce, women make 83 cents for every dollar a man makes. And according to the city of Los Angeles' report on the status of women and girls, six city departments currently have gender wage gaps greater than 25 cents. So we need to do something about narrowing the wage gap in our city, and we need to also let our women know that their work is valuable to us and that they shouldn't be valued any less than a man, and we need to do more to ensure that. Colleagues, I ask for an I vote.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Let's, Madam Clerk, prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven i's.
Okay, that should, I still have a few general public comment cards, Madam Clerk, so if I could get Brian Barajas, if I could get Jacqueline Richardson, and Yvonne Michelle Autry to please come forward. Mr. Barajas?
Yes, hi. On the LaRouche PAC website, Putin at the Balde Club calls for new world order, quote, "to make the fruit of economic growth and technological progress accessible to all," end quote. I think what's interesting about what's just occurred is that some people might be calling for Glass-Steagall, but they don't actually understand it at the level of LaRouche. I say that because many of you might have heard Trump's call for Glass-Steagall, but this is unusual because people who want to sound like LaRouche are not LaRouche. LaRouche is the only person that I know of who identifies where does the human culture reside and how do we actually create the human culture amongst ourselves. So forget it. LaRouche is right.
Thank you. So, if I can get Ms. Autry, please come forward for a general public comment. This will be my last call for Ms. Jacqueline Richardson.
Yeah, I thought you were combining it. You combined everyone else's comments but mine. For the record, it's obvious that Hispanic people have replaced black and African-American people as the working class, and now the prisons have become the penthouses and the plantations for black people. I realize that there are, the majority of the businessmen who are Jewish, I'm not anti-Semitic, would encourage the immigration of Hispanic people because they are cheap slave laborers. I'm an advocacy of the reparations due to black people. There are enough resources given to Hispanic people. I'm not a racist. I would like my 40 acres and a mule posthumously. And also, for the record, the Jewish landlords like Isaac Shomoff and others are encouraging Hispanic maintenance men, mafia, and other low-level Hispanic criminals to enter our room and damage black people's personal possession.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, I'm looking for Ms. Richardson. I don't see Ms. Richardson, so that concludes a general public comment for today. Madam Clerk, what's before this body?
Council has motions for posting referral.
They're posted and referred. That brings us where?
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements, members? Any announcements? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to invite the colleagues and the public to join Councilman Marquise Harris-Dawson and I from the Eighth District. We're going to be having a joint Dia de los Muertos festival this Sunday. It's going to be an exciting affair on Hoover and MLK Boulevard. There'll be music, food, games, altars, and all kinds of celebrations. And so we just invite you to come out to this joint celebration between Council Districts Eight and Nine, and the whole world is invited to come out and join us.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Hoover and Martin Luther King will be our Dia de los Muertos. We will have a great performer, La Compa Negra, who's an African-American young man who has learned how to sing boleros and other kinds of Latin American music, so it'll be very exciting. I want to rise to stand and acknowledge John Henry, our intern who's worked with us all year. He is a junior studying Environmental Studies at USC. He's been an administrative intern and a big fun part of the team and has mean beatboxing skills, so he fits in good with the CD8 team. So we want to thank him for his service and thank him for being part of building the kind of Los Angeles we all deserve. Thank you, Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. And I also want to announce the Dia de los Muertos?
Muertos.
Okay, I'll get it, okay? I don't celebrate it in CD10, but we do celebrate it in Council District Seven, so I'd like to invite everyone to Pacoima City Hall. It'll be this weekend. I personally will be there this Sunday. The event's from 11:00 to 6:00 this weekend, and also, there'll be something for the children Monday evening. So again, I invite everybody to Pacoima City Hall, 13520 Van Nuys Boulevard in Pacoima. Okay, any other announcements? Could we all rise for adjourning motions? Could we all in the council chambers, please rise for adjourning motions? I'd like to recognize Mr. Paul Corretts.
Colleagues, one of the city of Los Angeles' newest employees lost his father when Joseph Intook passed away on October 6th here in Los Angeles. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounced some of the names. Mr. Joseph Intook was born on April 29, 1943, in the village of Mbeaya in Irawan, British Nigeria. He was the oldest of six siblings and grew up in the city of Kalabar, Cross River State, Nigeria. When teaching in high school, he was teaching high school math and science classes in Onicha. Joseph met Joanne, a fellow classroom teacher who was a Peace Corps volunteer from America. They began dating, fell in love, and she helped him move to the United States in 1967 to attend Cal State University Long Beach, where he went on to earn his bachelor's degree in international finance. He had a lifelong love of education, teaching high school math and science classes for many years in Los Angeles and Compton Unified School Districts. Joseph went back to school to earn an associate of science degree in electronics from Long Beach City College and attended Loyola Law School. He was a serial entrepreneur who formed and managed many businesses in the fields of real estate, computer technology, transportation, medicine, and biochemical engineering. Several of his family members are here today. He's survived by his wife of 40 years, Joanne Intook, their five children, Ateem Cave, Oman Intook, Odewak Joe Intook, Edward Intook, and Nisa Intook. His daughter-in-law, Tanua Thrash Intook, five grandchildren, two brothers, three sisters in Uyo, and countless friends in the Los Angeles, Long Beach community, as well as the Akwa Iborn community. He has always said that his proudest accomplishments are his five children, and we are fortunate to have his son, Odewa Intook, as the city's new petroleum administrator. So I know he will be sorely missed by his family and friends. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Corretts, and to the family, you have our condolences, and you know, it's a wonderful family and a wonderful son that shows the intelligence to marry such a phenomenal young lady, and the new Thrash. And so we welcome you to the family and we share your sadness. Okay, I'm looking back to my right, to Mr. Weezer's side, for other adjourning motions. Now I'm looking to my left. I don't see any. With that said, this council meeting is adjourned.